Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and call out October 12th, 2017 Palatka City Commission Meeting to Order. We're gonna have our invocation by Reverend Ace of Greer, Executive Director of St. John's River Baptist Association. Reverend Greer will also lead us in the place where we stand.
Let's pray together. Father, as we come to you in the name of Jesus, the name that's above every name, we thank you for the privilege to stand here today among this government body and call on your name. Father, it's a great privilege we have to live in America, and we thank you for that and the freedoms we have. And Lord, we pray that today, tonight, these decisions that made would be honoring and glorifying to you, Lord, and that, Lord, each commissioner that's here and our mayor, Lord, would be reminded, Father, that you have placed them here for this time and this season. We pray for godly wisdom from them tonight and for the future as they lead this great city of Palatka, Father. Father, each one has a heart to lead this city and its citizens in a way that's beneficial to all, and Father, I thank you for that. I thank you, Lord, for all they have done and all they're gonna do to help us in those areas that will help our citizens, Father. Thank you so much for just blessing us over and over again. Thank you for this privilege we have to call on your name. Bless now this night and these people for your glory. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Right.
Commissioner Borum.
President.
Commissioner Campbell.
President.
Commissioner McCaskill votes here. So the commission are present at the floor.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of September 14th through September 28th?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Does your all the tamper say aye?
Aye.
Propose motion carries unanimously. Now move on to item one of the agenda, just a couple of recognitions and presentations. We've got a couple for this week. The first is for Red Ribbon Week. It's Beverly Beard here. I'll move to the second proclamation, which is World Polio Day, who hopes that she makes it in. Palatka Rotary and Sunrise Rotary, you have me about here. Please move forward at this time. Cyril?
I don't know if they'll let me sit down there. Have you seen you lately? A lot of savings.
You guys remember him?
Whereas Rotary International founded on February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations with over 1.2 million Rotary members comprised of professionals and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries. Whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas in 1985, Rotary launched a Polio Plus and spearheaded the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, to immunize children of the world against polio. Whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. Whereas today, Rotary has contributed more than $1.7 billion in countless voluntary hours to the protection of more than 2 billion children in 122 countries, and is currently working to raise an additional $150 million, which if realized, will be tripled by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation for a total of $450,000 over the next three years. Whereas Rotary's efforts provide needed operational support, medical personnel, equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. And whereas there are over 250 Rotary Club members in four clubs throughout Putnam County sponsoring service projects to address the critical issues such as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities in the Bronx. Now therefore, I tarrel Hill Mayor of the City of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, hereby endorse and proclaim Tuesday, October 24th, 2017 as World Polio Day. In the City of Palatka, I encourage all citizens to join myself, the officials, and the staff of the City of Palatka and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. And witness whereof, I appear and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palatka, of the City of Palatka, Florida, on this 12th day of October in the year of our Lord, 2017. Tarrel Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Moore, Justin Campbell, Tammy McCaskill Williams, all entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And I want to thank you for the work that you've done in polio, for every representative who wants to come forward at this time.
You're the only person.
Yeah.
Mr. Dollar.
He's here and organized it.
So I did organize it. I'll just make a quick comment. There's currently three countries in the world that have polio, Afghanistan, Pakistan, and India. As of just recently, there's only been 10 cases of polio this year. Once we get that down to zero, it takes three years to actually be officially eradicated. And once this is done, not if, but when this is done, it will be the second disease ever eradicated in the face of the earth. So it's gonna be tremendous.
Thank you very much. Has Miss Barrett arrived yet?
I'll go ahead and read the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. Whereas cities across America have been plagued by numerous problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and the hope lies in the hard work and determination of our communities to create a drug-free environment, local leaders in government and in the community know that the support of people in neighborhoods is the most effective tool. And whereas success will not occur overnight, therefore, our patience and continued commitment to drug education and prevention are imperative. Whereas the red ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Quique Camarino, a drug enforcement administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference. The Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to promote this belief and to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention efforts. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign, held annually during the week of October 23rd through 31st, is now the oldest and largest drug prevention program in the nation, reaching millions of young people. And whereas in 2017, the Red Ribbon's theme is "Your Future Is Your Key, So Stay Drug Free." It helps to broadcast the national messaging call on all Americans to show their support for a drug-free state by wearing a ribbon as a symbol of intolerance towards the use of illegal drugs and to participate in drug-free activities during the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2017. Now therefore, I tarrel Hill Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2017, as Red Ribbon Week. 2017 in the City of Palatka, I encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, media, religious and educational institutions, to wear and display red ribbons and to participate in drug-free activities during the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2017. Now therefore, I tarrel Hill Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2017, as Red Ribbon Week. 2017 in the City of Palatka, I encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, media, religious and educational institutions, to wear and display red ribbons and to participate in drug-free activities throughout the week, joining the rest of the state in promoting Red Women Ribbon Week. Furthermore, because children whose parents talk to them regularly about drugs are 42% less likely to use drugs than those who don't, I urge all parents to regularly have those conversations with their kids. And witness whereof, I appear and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palatka, Florida, on this 12th day in the year of our Lord, 2017. Tarrel Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Moore, Justin Campbell, Tammy McCaskill Williams, Commissioners, all entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose motion carries unanimously. Let's just give a round of applause for Red Ribbon. Last up, we have a presentation by the American Red Cross. We've got Mr. Quincy Masters who's here. We also are expecting Victoria Riley for the American Red Cross. Is somebody here?
Sure. Victoria Riley sends her apologies. She's not feeling well, and she asked that I come in her stead. And I am your community volunteer representative for the American Red Cross, and we just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to serve during Hurricane Irma. But as your representative with the Red Cross, I'd be able to talk with local elected officials, so if you ever have a question or a problem, please feel free to contact me. But the Red Cross did assist during Hurricane Irma, and I brought some numbers here. The 11 overnight stays, that's 11 overnight stays, and the Red Cross served 9,504 meals and snacks. And I was asking our rep today in Jacksonville, how did that happen, 9,500 meals and all the other overnight stays? Well, they would come and set up in the Price Mart Center, understand, and hand out meals in different places like that. And people would come to shelters and get meals even if they weren't staying overnight because they didn't have electricity. And they also gave out 10,100 cleanup kits and bulk items like rags, shovels, gloves, trash bags, bleach, cleaner, mops, buckets, things like that. And they also had 60 health and mental health contacts during the storm. So I just want to share that with you all again. Thank you. And I guess I'm finished.
All right, thanks, sir.
And just to kind of reiterate on some of the things that Mr. Masters said, they worked tirelessly throughout the storm. You guys may have, you may have actually witnessed the food truck. There was a food truck that the Red Cross had set up and it moved all around this county. It was prepared to serve at least 500 meals per day, and that truck went around this county for several days, serving people within the community and meeting the needs. And I definitely want to give another round of applause to Mr. Masters, our local representative, for the work he did.
Well, now moving to our public comments. Our public comments are limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. First up for public comments, we'll call Mr. Andrew Halesko from Passero Associates.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and City of Palatka. I've missed a few of your commission meetings over the past few months where you have taken some actions on some airport items. I am the Program Manager and Vice President of Passero Associates, and we have been your airport consultant for quite a few years. I'm actually here tonight to say thank you for the reselection of Passero Associates and extending our contract into March of 2018. I'm sorry you missed that meeting. I was actually teaching a class on that day, and I'm off tonight so I can be here. You have approximately $405,000 of construction projects that are about to be underway at the airport. Again, they're 100% funded projects, which is just a great thing that in some way the Florida DOT and the FA are able to support the city in that manner. We've worked very hard with a lot of city staff members and members of your airport advisory board to do everything we can to keep those projects moving forward. I'm just here to say thank you because I've missed you on some of those occasions, and I wanted to express my appreciation out of the app firm, and we enjoy our work relationship with the city, and want, glad that's continuing into 2018. Thank you.
I'd like to say we're lucky to have young kids helped us find dollars that we didn't have and helped us move our airport on its own so greatly in the last few years in getting us to be a quality airport. And I hope that we'll move on so that we'll be able to do international business out of that or shuttle people from here to Jacksonville, Orlando, or somewhere else to get our own service going. And I think we're on the way to it. And they look out for us. They look for the funding. And a lot of the stuff that's been done is because of the efforts that that company has put in. I sit on the airport advisory board that you lay his on, and I think it's good just to do it if I didn't that, to tell you how hard they worked for us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
There's one other thing that you do, and you've done it for the past three years. Can you kind of expand on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that we've been able to do to get involved in giving back to the community here in Palatka, once a year, we take a group of volunteers and a group of high school students with the high school and the city. We charter a bus and we take the kids down to an Orlando Magic Basketball game one day. And it's a long day, it's a long, for all of us, but we take a group of students which are chosen by the high school as good students, good athletes and all. I told the mayor in the past few years, I sit in the back of the students and I talk to them, I interact with them, and every year I can tell you, you should be proud of the students that are on that bus, because every year, they talk with me, they're polite, they say thank you, and I listen to what they say on the bus. I have the same age group in my own house, and they're a good group of kids. We'll be doing that again in March of 2018. We'll be bringing the bus back in for another group and looking forward to doing what we can to give them that opportunity and fun. And I will tell you, this year, we're gonna have them, I didn't even think about it when I've been saying this, but they'll be on the court with the players this year during the National Anthem.
Wow!
We always try to do something special with the kids, some event, and this year there was a menu of events, and we will have them down there. So it'll be hopefully something very memorable to them. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you.
All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Best. Let's stick your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Zenny Best. I live in 200 Hayes Drive, Indiana, Florida, and I want to thank you, Commissioner, all the commissioners and the mayor for the need of minutes to ask for people that can't help themselves. Mental illness is raging in this country. I have a mental illness myself. It can be managed. We're trying to open a psychosocial location rehabilitation center in the City of Palatka here, where people, only qualification is sometime in your life you have been diagnosed with a mental illness. With this clubhouse, we make sure you get everything that you need to live a healthy, safe, productive life, like myself. I was very sick 15 years ago, industry homeless, today, and not knowing how to take care of myself. With the clubhouse, we will show people how to take care of them. I lost my mother and my father. I didn't know how to live. I didn't know what family was outside of what I experienced. But I was around some genuine people in the clubhouse that said, "This is what you do." My mentors, "This is how you take care of yourself. This is how you present yourself. This is how you shop. This is how you buy clothes. This is how you maintain yourself." And this is what so many of us have. We don't have that ability if you're miserably ill. You're entitled to things where you can't fill out an application if you don't know what the application is. The Social Security Department is gone. With the clubhouse, all these powerful agency and government agencies, they will come to us because we have a gathering where we come together and we meet in one place and we can get the assistance that we need and the help that's out there for us. And I want to thank you again, Mayor, and please, the phrase, I'd like to leave you this week, "How could you stand by and watch somebody?" And you know you can help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? Seeing no one, we will close public comment and move into item three, which is our consent agenda. Five items today. Item A is adopt resolution 2017-13-01, requesting a waiver and permit fees from St. John's River Water Management District fiscal year 2017-18. B, adopt resolution number 2017-13-02, authorizing execution of the Victims of Crime Act vocal grant for the Palatka Police Department in the amount of $40,244 for fiscal year 2017-18 to fund a full-time victims' advocate position. C, adopt resolution number 2017-12-03, authorize execution of the contract agreement with the professional firefighters of Palatka, Local 2992, effective October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2019. D, special events permit number 17-49, authorizing the closure of certain streets for vehicular traffic for PHS Homecoming Parade on October 19th, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Palatka High School Student Council applicant Erin McNeil. Agent. E, send Halloween trick or treat date and time for Tuesday, October 31st, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Are there any items on the consent agenda that we need to have? Motion to approve. Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public hearings. Item number four, resolution authorizing the execution of site access agreement granting St. John's River Water Management District access to airport property to construct storm order improvements to direct airport storm order runoff, runoff away from district property. Adopt.
A resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, authorizing execution of a site access agreement with the St. John's River Water Management District for drainage improvements at the Palatka Municipal Airport.
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Mr. Best.
Yes, sir, just quickly, I think everyone's aware, but following the hurricane and the great event that followed about a week later, the water management district flooded as well as the area around the airport on the northern boundary. They had significant damage to one of their buildings. We also had damage to one of our bus stations as well as our focal line that runs through there because of the amount of water that basically sheet runoff from the airport onto their property and through the drainage ditch that goes through the property. They are proposing at their cost to construct a ditch to intercept this runoff and divert it away from their construction improvements, a parking lot and building, and through the culvert that runs through their property and out underneath Highway 100. Staff is recommending approval of this site access agreement.
They had a discussion, does it relate to standing water near airports and all the risks associated?
Yes, sir, as you know, we've been trying for a couple of years to get the spray field off the airport and make sure we got positive runoff, so we don't want birds.
And this supports us that opportunity?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Questions? Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five, public hearing. 26 parcels at Comfort Road and Crystal Cove Road for proposed RV Park planning board recommendation to amend the future land use map from residential medium RM to recreation REC and to rezone the property from R3 multifamily residential to ROS recreation and open space. Riverwatch LLC applicant. This item was tabled from July 13th until September 14th until today. Item A is future land use amendment ordinance, first reading.
Head ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted complements of plan be amended with respect to following parcel of land less than 10 acres in size from RM residential medium density to REC recreation for 26 parcels located north and east of intersection of Comfort Road and Crystal Cove Road located in section 37 township nine south range 26 east, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion on the floor? Silence. Motion to approve. For discussion purposes only. There's a motion on the floor in a second. No. Mr. Crowe here. Mr. Crowe. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Stagg, Rowman, Director, if you have any questions or give some sort of brief overview.
I think we should be fully aware at this time of what's going on. Have there been any changes since the last time we spoke?
As outlined in the memo, we did receive last week the updated site plan, in which we have requested they provide the conceptual grade plan. That was one of the things, and hopefully we should have that here. That's still over from the last meeting. The grade plan was one thing, and the other thing was, okay, landscape plan. So what you have in your packet and is also included with the ordinance is the most revised, updated site plan, landscape plan, as said to us last week. I think that is, should be. Other than that, there have been no changes. I did receive a very brief economic analysis that the applicant did. Mike Mayor Brown had asked that we get them to provide something with their best estimates of economic impacts. I have handles that don't have it. But other than that, nothing's really changed since the last week. Thank you.
Riverwatch.
Mayor, Charles Sallow, 306305, northwest 79 terrace gainfield. Actually happy to meet tonight my partner, Ken Thomas, who's sitting with me. There are additional questions. I'll be brief. I think that covered it. We've made a few changes. I'll highlight those changes on the presentation on the floor. We were asked to provide, while I'm waiting, an economic analysis, which I think we tried to do. What we tried to do is compare a city of this size that's in Texas, similar sized city, RV Park. We gave it a best estimate of what the salt revenue would be generated from the park, both in taxes, sales taxes, spinoff monies that would be spent in city, restaurants, bars, et cetera. That's our best guess. You know, my estimate is probably somewhere between $200,000 to $500,000 of revenue would be generated from our park. And that's at a 55% occupancy rate, so you would think that that would generally go up over time.
Item A is future land use amendment ordinance, first reading.
Head ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida providing that the future land use map of the adopted complements of plan be amended with respect to following parcel of land less than 10 acres in size from RM residential medium density to REC recreation for 20-some parcels located north and east of intersection of Comfort Road and Crystal Cove Road located in section 37 township nine south range 26 east providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion on the floor? Silence. Motion to approve. For discussion purposes only. There's a motion on the floor in second. No. Mr. Crowe here. Mr. Crowe. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Stagro, may I ask you questions or give some sort of brief overview?
I think we should be fully aware at this time of what's going on. Have there been any changes since the last time we spoke?
As outlined in the memo, we did receive last week the updated site plan in which we have requested they provide the conceptual raise plan. That was one of the things and that's still over from the last meeting. The raise plan was one thing. And the other thing was, okay, landscape plan. So what you have in your packet and is also included with the ordinance is the most revised, updated site plan, landscape plan as said to us last week. I think that is what should be included. Other than that, there have been no changes. I did receive a very brief economic analysis that the applicant did. Mike May Brown had asked that we get them to provide something with their best estimates of economic impacts. I have handles that don't have it. But other than that, nothing has really changed since the last meeting. Thank you.
Riverwatch?
Mr. Mayor, Carl Sall, 306-305 northwest 79 terrace gainfield. Actually happy to meet tonight my partner, Ken Thomas, who's sitting with me. There are additional questions. I'll be brief. I think that covered it. We made a few changes. I'll highlight those changes on the presentation on the floor. We were asked to provide while I'm waiting of economic analysis, which I think we tried to do. What we tried to do is compare a city of this size that's in Texas, similar sized city, RV park. We gave it a best estimate of what the salt revenue would be generated from the park, both in taxes, sales taxes, spin-off monies that would be spent in city, restaurants, bars, et cetera. That's our best guess. You know, my estimate is probably somewhere between $200,000 to $50,000 of revenue would be generated from our park. And that's at a 55% occupancy rate, so you would think that that would generally go up
It's in a PDF, so it's kind of... Can't get it to go to like a page for that. It's not in PowerPoint. It's in a, it's in a PDF.
Do you have, what is office load?
It's not in PowerPoint. So this, yeah, this will have to be is...
You all want to slide it out?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is what we started with, just to refresh everyone's memory, the original density on the project. Our first revision was at 64 residential units. Then we went 50. When we came, when we brought it into the planning board, it was essentially 50 units. We revised that plan, we sloped that a little bit, and we're now at 40 RV units. Now, in the interim, just to remind everybody, there were some additional boat storage slips that we essentially removed, a great majority of those as well. This is the next one? No. This was the next one after that? First one? Yeah. So what came out of the myriad of meetings we had is that originally we had the boat storage facility on the south side of the project, removing it from the south side of the project to the north side of the project. We moved the entrance way, which was co-located with the marina, to the west side of the project so that there wouldn't be stacking on the roadway. And we agreed to an additional landscape bump, which I'll show you the result of that. So this was our original concept plan. You see the boat storage on the south side, the lineup of the RV entrances co-located with the marina. Go to the next slide. And then this is where we are now. So the way we have designed this in the end, we've put most of the green space along the east boundary. And also, we've got located now a fence on our east boundary that extends from the north boundary all the way down to the entrance way. Now, we can further revise the look of the fence or the look of the wall or whatever we want to do through the RC process. I'm open to that. There's, there were some concerns at the last meeting about a fence or some way of buffering at east boundary. And so that's what we've kind of come up with. Now, the other thing is that all of those trees on the east boundary are stacked, so there is no clearing, so to speak, on that east boundary at all. You go next one. This was, this is just another reminder of our traffic impact. Essentially, we had very little traffic impact the way it's designed. One of the issues that came up early on was how, if there was stacking of RVs, how we'd handle the stacking. And so in the final design, coming in from the west side, we've got a location there where vehicles can actually pull up off the road into the park and not have to be stacked out on the roadway. Next one. You go to the next. You go to the next. So I brought along, just for everyone to read, these are already in the public record. This is what we go along with the PUD as far as the rules of the park. Some of this is basic RV stuff, some of it is a little bit more as far as hours of operation, quiet time, pets, et cetera, et cetera. So again, because you're approving the PUD, a lot of this detail will move forward into the DRC process and then you'll file for me. One thing about sanitation that came up at the last meeting, and I don't know if Stewart says it or not, we are required to have a dump out station. The facility is required by DEP, so in addition to hooking up to water and sewer, we'll have that facility there. That's required for a DEP firm. This is just a copy of the economic impact analysis. We projected about $138,000 in revenue. That doesn't include what we're paying taxes. So I think if you add it all up, it's going to be somewhere between $200,000 to $250,000 of net increase to the city, both in taxes and other things that, you know, hopefully are beneficial. So again, in closing, I've tried to do everything in my power to make sure and accommodate our neighbors because I'm going to be the one that's going to be living with these folks for the next 20 years. And I'm not looking for any more fights about this. I essentially have tried to do everything in my, in my power to make this work. So I think our final design at the end of the day took in a lot of consideration from the, from the property owners. We listened to what the plan board said. There really wasn't anything that was said along, along the line that we did not try to incorporate. I mean, I can't think of one thing that was said that wasn't incorporated. So I think we're down to the minimum size that makes this thing feasible at 40 spaces. And that's kind of where we're at. Any questions on any, any questions? Any questions from the commission?
In your analysis, did you come up with the tax base that you would add?
Yeah, well, what, the taxes that are paid right now on the property for the 24 lots, we pay about $70,000 a year in property taxes. At build-out, I would assume that that would be at least double that.
So it would be from 17 to 34?
$34,000 taxes. And, you know, just as a, as an aside, we've, Ken and I have owned the property since 2006. When, the way it works is as soon as you essentially platted a piece of land, the platted lots are where you pay taxes. You know, it's, it's not like you have a vacant piece of land anymore. So as soon as we platted those 24 lots, we were paying taxes on, on lots even though they weren't developed. So I think our tax bill last year was, was it about $17,000? It's not about $17,000. So that, that's at a, you know, that's, you're looking at a project that's being taxed as if there were homes there and there never has been homes. Any other questions? Thank you. Charlie Douglas.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Charlie Douglas, 601 St. John's Avenue here on behalf of the residents of Crystal Cove subdivision. I want to first start out by saying what we're not here about, and that is to stonewall this project. A lot of time has been spent at the planning board in past city commission meetings, and the residents are prepared to take a big leap of faith in the commission and Mr. Salafrio that if in fact this is going to change from an R3 designation to a PUD ROS, that it will have the look and feel as it has been built to be, which is of Renegades on the river down in the south. If in fact this project takes on the look of Renegades, like the picture at the top of the presentation, the residents can be satisfied with that. The reason that I'm here is to address a couple of questions and ask that some of the information and the recommendations that have been made at the planning board level and from staff to the commission are incorporated into the ordinance. And to make it as organized as possible, I'm going to start with the packet that you have with ordinance number 17. And I just want to ask very quickly if on section one, if approved, if that was just a scripter's error, where it said change their classification of PUD slash C2. Am I understanding all along that this is a PUD ROS, according to the program?
That is script.
Okay. So we were just asking if there were to be a motion to approve this, that a change be made in section one of the ordinance under 17 to change that from PUD C2 to PUD ROS.
Is it 17? Page 17?
The first page of the ordinance, section one of the ordinance under the last clause.
And what was your recommendation? Right here. I see that tended to be PUD ROS instead of PUD C2.
PUD ROS.
Also, the residents of the Crystal Cove subdivision have got together as a group and signed a petition that they would like for the commissioners to review, which just puts into the record their overall concerns of the project. And with a Matanzas appraisal group incorporated letter that talks about the potential devaluation of their property. It's still in recognition, I'll ask the ground for commissioners to review and ask that it be included in the record. Even in light of the risks associated with their property values, they're willing to, in good faith, come to the commission this evening in an attempt to find a way for compromise and work with and not get in the way of development. The neighbors simply ask for smart development and in a way that is going to make the neighborhood a place that still maintains the character that they have worked very hard to build up and maintaining through the years. All right, so moving on to the next request that we would have is that according to the code of ordinances 94-234, the statement of unified control, Mr. Salafrio is required to put in the record that he has full control over the property. Based on our research, I believe that that's the case. But just for certainty and in conformity, the ordinances that are requiring a segment of unified control, we ask that that be included while the PUD is being approved. That is the wish of the board to approve the PUD. And also that Mr. Salafrio state, that's also required by 94-234, that the PUD requirements would be binding on all successors and interest in this property so that if Mr. Salafrio were to sell before 20 years, those people coming behind him would also be held to the same standards that we would be approving. All right. Next on the list is exhibit one, and again, I'm referring to the packet that you have. It goes through the ordinance to sections one, two, and three. Section one incorporates into the ordinance exhibits one, two, three, four, and five. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time on each of these exhibits with some particular requests from the residents so that we can arrive at a RV park that is, is similar to Renegades on the river as possible because I believe everybody recognizes the, the great look that Renegades has down in the south.
Okay. Just to make sure that I'm following, the packet, exhibit one allowable uses and development standards, is that what you're referencing?
Yes, sir.
Is that your packet? All right. Okay. Is that what you have?
No, I, I guess as far as with the revisions, my, my concern is we're getting a lot of information at the time of the meeting. I'm not sure when you all finalized this stuff, but we are really trying to make a, well, I know I want to make a decision and I want to make an informed decision, but it's hard for me to make a informed decision when we have these suggested changes at the time of us having to vote. But we've tabled this several times and it's, I, I mean, again, we're being faced with new revisions and then we want to make sure that with these revisions, they are, you know, our attorney, you know, approves of them or, you know, any suggestions. That's my only real concern about what we, what we are, what you're doing right now. If I can, I think I can set your mind at ease. We're not, we're not making the look to make, make changes. The number of RV sites is okay for the RV sites. We're not looking to change the entrances. That is okay. These are items that are in such a nature that I believe the city commission would be able to have it put on in a final motion. And I did speak with your attorney earlier in the week regarding this, and it was his opinion, I don't want to represent, please correct me if I'm wrong, that I'd be able to make these requests, simply to the city commission if you do not agree with the request. But I, I believe that you'll see once I go through these requested changes that they are not of a substantive degree that would prevent you from being able to evaluate them tonight. And I think you'd probably agree with Mr. Salafrio on 85% of the items, maybe even 90%. So what I'm talking about tonight is a very, very small percentage that we would like to have cleaned up and just clarify really. Most of this stuff already came through in the planning board, but it just hasn't ended up in the ordinance. And that's what we're requesting. There are a couple items that...
And that's, and that's accurate. I mean, it's accurate that Mr. Douglas in fact contacted me and asked whether the commission would be in a position to make changes, relatively minor changes to what came from the planning commission without having to go back to the planning commission. I, I consulted with Thad to make sure that Thad was, was in agreement with that. I did not see a problem with it, but I want to make sure that Thad didn't see a problem with it. He advised me that he did not see a problem with it, as long as the changes were not substantial or substantive, such as changing the number of spaces or changing where the access is. So it's my understanding that in fact that the changes that are being talked about are in the nature of, I guess, minor as, you know, in the eye of the beholder, but it's my understanding that they are in the nature of minor changes. What I don't know is whether or not this is in our packet or I assume that Mr. Salafrio has seen them too? I'm asking. Yeah? You have, you've seen them?
Yeah, I've looked at them.
Okay, so...
Mr. Holmes, can I clarify? I've not seen the changes that are being proposed yet.
Are you having?
No.
Okay. Well, I thought that's what I asked. I thought, so the exhibit one allowable uses and development standards that we have in our packet is, that's what Mr. Douglas is talking about now changing?
Yes, I believe so. That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And, okay. I guess we haven't seen them and you haven't seen them either?
Yeah. I'm hoping that is that, yeah. All right. Let's, let's hear it before we shoot it.
Yeah. First is exhibit one, the allowable uses and development standards. This regards the, the eastern wall, that the whole thing be brick like Renegades. This was something that staff recommended in an email. They said that staff would be recommending that the eastern wall and that the whole thing be brick like Renegades. That did not make it into exhibit one. So I'll pass this around for the commissioners to review.
Is the adjacent wall now?
We, we talked about that at the last meeting. They just said it was just going to put a fence and they, they had not talked about putting a wall there. That's what we had from our last meeting. Right, Mr. Salafrio?
That's correct. Okay.
That's correct. Okay. My understanding, based on the presentation that Mr. Salafrio made just moments ago, was that he said a fence or a wall or whatever barrier is on the eastern side, we would request that it would be the wall instead of the fence.
Based on the last meeting, Mr. Salafrio stated that there would not be a wall, it would be a fence. So I'll pass this along, but that's what I understood.
All right. Next would be on exhibit one, item number seven, as far as support structures go, the location of the pump out station is not listed on the site plan. We would request that that be positioned in a way that is not going to emit noxious odors into the subdivision. So in other words, it's not going to be by the boat trailer section, it would be on a different area so that the pump out sewage smell would not go into the neighborhood. Also, that was section seven in exhibit one, under support structures. Also, the pool, with the pool, there's nothing in there about the type of the pool. We're not trying to get into the nitty gritty details, but we would ask that it be at least an in-ground pool, not in the above-ground pool, to maintain the upscale nature that this project has been built to be. In addition, with the recreation area, as far as the clubhouse goes, we would ask that the clubhouse, in addition to it keeping the old Florida feel, which is what staff has recommended with windows and porches and overhangs, that it not be a mobile structure, that it be a permanent structure on the property to, again, maintain the upscale feel. In addition to those, section nine for internal driveways, in my opinion, my humble opinion, it's a little unclear exactly what is required of the applicant here. It doesn't seem to me that pavers are required or something that's in a similar appearance to a paver. I fear that the gray area in here could allow for something other than what the commission and the planning board has asked for it to be like the pavers. But I know that is something expensive and I think the neighbors will be willing to work with Mr. Salafrio on that, you know, not trying to get away, but at least pavers on the apron section coming off the roadway up to the gate. You indicated that. I know it was on one of the later, or earlier versions of the site plan, but I'm not sure that it's on the updated version of the night. It's on the recent. All right. In addition, the check-in station. In the check-in station, we would ask for some specificity on that as well in paragraph or section nine of exhibit one, to include some guidance to the applicant, that it not be a mobile structure that can tie it through and take it off with wheels and axle. I'm imagining something like a fair booth type of a situation. We would want something that looks nice and a permanent structure for the check-in station. On section 10 in exhibit one, under architecture, there's no guidance to the applicant for signage. And the neighbors would request that there not be a neon sign or a digital sign or something acrylic in nature, that there would be a little bit more guidance to the applicant to maintain that old Florida feel and upscale nature of the project. As far as the gates go, there has been a lot of discussion in some of the minutes in the planning board for the gates, but it did not translate into the exhibit of the ordinance. But we would request that we clearly articulate in exhibit one, under the architecture section, that the gates be whatever you choose, whether it's wrought iron or some ornate structure or crushed aluminum, just not chain fence or something of that nature, but the gates look nice and that they be electric. None of that is currently in the proposed ordinance here. All right. Finally, exhibit one, under management, there was a lot of discussion in the planning board minutes and some of the prior submissions, that there would be onsite 24-hour management. And we like that, we appreciate that. It's just not in the exhibit to the ordinance. So we would request that onsite 24-hour management be included. Okay. Moving right along to exhibit two, these are the guest rules and prohibitions. The applicant had an expert, their company was environmental consulting and design, and they submitted the rules and regulations and prohibitions that were good. They were, there were a lot of detail in there and covered most of the bases, but those did not go into exhibit one or exhibit two, which is the guest rules and regulations. And also the prohibitions that staff had recommended from the June 6, 2017 board minutes are not in exhibit two, and we would ask that those prohibitions be included as well. Okay, that takes care of exhibit two. Exhibit three is the site plan. And we discussed a little bit about that earlier with the pump out station, but we would also like to approve the location of the dumpster where solid base is going to be taken. We would ask that that not be next to the northern wall, again, to eliminate any type of noxious odors emanating from the dumpster. Then moving over to exhibit five, the stormwater drainage plan. The neighbors are concerned that swales alone are not going to be enough to contain the water, especially in light of what we all experienced with Hurricane Irma and Matthew and the nor'easters, that the water coming off of this piece of property, which already has a high water table and a somewhat imperious ground sediment there now, that the one point of exit for the drainage at the southeastern corner could not be sufficient to take care of the water and could compromise the integrity of the road that the city maintains. And because of concurrency reasons, we would want the drainage to be taken care of so it does not compromise the structural group. I just would like to reemphasize the importance to the neighborhood of the wall on the eastern side, that when you say fence, that certainly is not the upscale nature of the RV park that this was built to be. It is a far cry from the look of Renegades. And we would ask for the commission's serious consideration to underscore, give guidance in exhibit one, that the eastern structure there should be a wall and conformity with what Renegades has. Douglas, is Renegades have a fence?
I didn't see that.
Yes, it has a brick fence. Does it? That's my understanding.
It's not around the entire perimeter?
I think they just said that, they said it was on, you asked for it to be on the perimeter, I mean, the east, eastern wall, or they extended it out and around. So that would be the eastern wall. And this side in front.
Eastern boundary.
Eastern, you want that?
Not the whole property. Right after the eastern wall.
In addition to all of the other modification and changes?
Yes, sir.
From the?
And most of those modifications were something that had already been discussed and approved and agreed to at the planning board level. It just, they didn't translate into the ordinance that was being right now.
From the residents?
Even from Mr. Salafrio. For example, the rules and regulations, he agrees those, it was his company who provided the rules and regulations and the prohibitions. And the neighbors like that, it's just that those rules and regulations and prohibitions are not in the ordinance.
Okay. So they were fine with everything the way he presented it, but it's not in, it's not in the?
I would say mostly.
90% you say?
Right. The location of the pump station on the site plan, the wall are the big considerations. I want to make sure that if he heard the recommendation and your position on the recommendation statute.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Salafrio's coming up and he did make a list of what was just said, I had no problem with any of those being a substantial change. The only one that concerns me is the last one, the drainage standard. There's nothing to hang our hat on. I mean, I need like the kind of storm or a bit is, I can't just, unless it was for another outfall.
Well, Thad, let me, let me understand. I thought water management controlled the drainage plan.
They certainly do. We take a backseat in that. But I mean, you do have the ability to ask for a higher level of service for drainage, you know, where it's a bigger pond, more holding capacity, more outfalls off the property.
How do we, and I'm asking, I'm not arguing, I'm inquiring. Do we have the expertise to compete with them in deciding what's necessary out there?
No. I mean, I have to take their word for it and the engineer that seals the plans will attest to the performance of the stormwater. Like I said, I mean, I'm not sure if the applicant is ready to propose a higher stormwater standard, because that does happen sometimes. I mean, you can't have bigger ponds, more holding capacity and more outfalls, but there's no specificity in that last one. Everything else, I have no problem.
But my problem from a legal perspective is if we don't have the expertise to assess the reasonableness of the applicant's request for a higher standard, how can we impose it?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
I mean, I'm all, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't have any to hang my hat on, but it's a petrified.
You are aware that Renegades has a wooden fence around the entire perimeter? I've actually witnessed that there's a wooden fence, but I'm. Okay, go.
All right, so I'll respond to the things that were raised. I don't have any problems with 90% of that. I got a problem with the brick wall. That's the only thing I'll say straight up. Now, I will say this, and Kelly's here tonight, he can attest to it. There will be a decorative, I'm not saying it's a wall, but there is going to be a decorative front piece at the arena. Whatever's there will match on the other side. So essentially, if it's columns with nicely made wood between them, we will do that. But committing to a wall at that length, when I'm already building a wall on the north side and I've got that amount of buffer between the road and the RV park, I think is excessive for us. So the pavers at the RV spots, I've already agreed to that and I'm fine with that. The pavers coming in on the aprons, I've already agreed to that and I'm fine with that. The clubhouse with the old Florida look and feel, that's what we want to do anyway and we're fine with that. The pump out location in a spot that does not impact the air quality of the residents, I'm fine with that. And we will put it probably on the southeastern side, because it has to be somewhere near where the RVs come in and out. We will agree to an in-ground pool. It was never our intention to do an above-ground pool. We will agree to some type of brushed aluminum indoor decorative fence, not a cattle fence, which we would be doing anyway. We will agree to a check-in station that's not a mobile structure, that's some type of a permanent structure that's tasteful and has the same architectural style as the We will agree to the signage, I believe. We're not intending to put any kind of crazy looking, you know, there's a sign out at the highway. We'll probably put some old Florida looking signs, that type of thing, no neon signs and no flashing lights. As far as the management, we have committed to 24-hour onsite management and I don't have any problem writing that into the ordinance. You can include our, the rules that were developed by environmental consulting and define and put those verbatim in the document. I'm fine with that. And during the DRC process, we'll show the pump out facility and the dumpster on the site to be located somewhere within the southern portion of the property. As far as the drainage, I'm not quite sure what I can offer you on the drainage, other than to say that we're going to get a water management district permit. We've got a water management district permit for them from the last job. And whatever is required by the district, we've built.
What about prohibitions?
And the guest rules and prohibitions?
The guest rules and prohibitions.
Guest block?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Douglas, you have one minute. It sounds like we have a great agreement on most of this, but as far as the fence goes on the eastern side, we would request a wall, but in the alternative, if you're not a favorable wall, some type of a decorative fence with brick pilasters at certain intervals, that would help save costs for Mr. Salafrio.
First, may I keep something up? We had recommended to the applicant, to the site plan at this stage, that the eastern fence be a black decorative aluminum fence with brick pillars like we were saying, also with a tall hedge to help further screen things out. So that's, we'll just phone that out. We'll be asking for that in the site plan.
Got a number of speaker cards and I'll start with Mr. Plato. Speaker, as you come up, would you please state your name and address? You'll be limited to three minutes on your comments. Mr. Douglas took all your time.
Kent, I just ask, are the people who are speaking residents that are going to disagree with the representation that Mr. Douglas just made?
Uh, no, I'm not going to disagree. But I would like to say something.
Let's find your plug.
Okay. Paul Plato, 207 Crystal Cove Drive. I appreciate all the work that you guys have put in. Thank you for everything. I just think everything that was mentioned in previous meetings and the planning councils and stuff like that, you know, if it doesn't translate into the PUD, we have nothing to ensure that it goes through that way. So all the little notes here and there and all the recommendations, if they don't make it, it doesn't stick to anything. And if there's some change down the road and they say, well, we talked about it at a meeting, but it didn't make it in there, it's going to be he said, she said, and it's not going to be worth anything. So if we do go through with it, I really hope it's as grandiose as it's looking like to try to be something really nice to really help the neighborhood and I appreciate you guys for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Forrest Collison.
My name is Forrest Collison. Address is 250 Northeast 893rd Avenue, Brampton Court. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm on behalf of Saltwater Builders, a marine general contracting construction company, third generation, and we are going to be building the dock structures. Got to excuse us. We come straight from the field. We've been out there working today, trying to get everybody up and rolling again. But we wanted to come and speak and let you know that Mr. Kelly will have a very nice facility. We've had a lot of time in planning. We've thought through all the change orders. We've got everything fine tuned and we're going to be starting construction pretty soon. So we're starting to mobilize, we're getting the equipment coming to the facility, getting the barges there and look forward to working on the project. I can also say as an RVer and working construction, you know, we go where the water's at. It would be nice to have a nice facility to use. Will Tush Basin in our county is a fresh and saltwater, similar situation. The RV parks are growing and it has been a very, involved politically, it has been a very good asset to our counties as well. But we do look forward to work with Mr. Kelly, you guys, and he's going to have a nice facility.
Mr. Redford.
Good evening, Council. Kelly Redford, 121 Crystal Cove Drive. Thank you for your time. I'd like to say that I'm in favor of having an RV park as my neighbor. I believe it's very compatible with our area. And over the last five years, we've had numerous requests for RV sites. And having a RV park in the city would create a wonderful destination place for us. Not only the hotel, the marina, but also having an RV park would create a destination spot for people to come. It would create a positive economic impact as Mr. Salafrio explained, and we need that to grow. We can be one of the best destination spots on the river if this wants to go through. I agree that it needs to be built correctly, in a way that's attractive. And I feel that the landlord is satisfied with all the requests. And I would hope that we welcome this opportunity. Please accept the recommendations from the planning zoning board and use this opportunity to grow our community.
Rick Carey, 206 Crystal Cove Drive. I'm here with my wife to stand with the neighbors in our community to express our concern about this particular development. Generally speaking, we do not embrace this development. It would be disingenuous of me to imply to you that we think that an RV park is compatible with the residential area that we live in. But we assume to your wisdom, if you choose to move forward with this project, we at least request that you incorporate all of the suggestions that Mr. Douglas has presented to you and ensure that all of the promises and commitments that have been stated are carried out and adhered to. Thank you.
Thank you. Eagle.
Good evening, Scott Tingle, 232 Crystal Cove Drive. And I'm a resident of the neighborhood as well. A couple of things I'd just like to make a point to the commission is that, you know, if you were to defer this back to planning zoning, it doesn't mean that you're not business friendly. There are a lot of inconsistencies in the reports and the addendums and the appendixes that we're making up as we go along in each meeting instead of them being hammered out with details of what it looks like. And so, I don't think that we make it up as we go along and then approve it and then see what it turns out. So, there are things that I have concerns about that, I'm not a lawyer, but in looking at Florida statute, there are two different Florida statutes regarding RV parks. There's residential parks and then there's the transient parks. And I didn't see in the rules that were posted up here, we said we'd agree from a fifteen day stay. And I would ask you to educate yourself on that fact before this moves forward. Is that in certain aspects of the Florida statute that I've read is that you can stay for fifteen days and then leave the RV there and it's not considered inhabited. So how does Mr. Salafrio intend to manipulate the law and the regulations so that they can store it for RVs where there's entrances and tents and carts and garages on the property that decorate and evaluate property? There's a Florida statute that allows for residential parks. And this is not a residential park. So if we have in the rules fifteen days, doesn't mean that at the end of day sixteen, we write another contract for fifteen days and we keep the same RVs on the park. That's not what we believe is the intention of this project. And I believe that people will manipulate the system as the rules allow to get their benefit. And that will allow for RVs to be on blocks, for there to be carts, for there to be garages, for there to be windows, even though we state they're armed. How is the city going to enforce the fifteen day stay? I ask you that. How are you going to enforce it?
It would be a violation of the terms of the FUD. It would be enforced the same way as the city enforces codes. It could also result in, actually, it could even result in the FUD ultimately being revoked, but we've never had somebody violate the extent that that occurs.
So I have a significant concern about fifteen day being exceeded and just being a repeat contract on day sixteen and becoming day one all over again. And I did not see fifteen days in the rules of the RV park that were posted.
It's already an allowable uses and development standards, maximum stay. The maximum stay shall be fifteen days. Item number twelve.
So again, with all of the changes that were spoken about tonight, I believe that it should be referred back to planning zoning where folks can sit back and talk face to face and with the neighborhood and Mr. Salafrio and talk about exactly what it should look like before we move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seen no one who will close public comment at this time. Is there any discussion?
I want to ask a question with the things that the community brought forward for him to do or change. He said that he was, would do everything except the fence part of it, was that correct? The wall, I mean, the wall part. You put a, 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 a protective fence there, but not a wall. And so, all the other things that they asked you to do, you're willing to?
In addition to the specifics that were changed over time, that's not part of what's in the ordinance?
No.
What, what was it?
It wasn't the, the items enumerated by Mr. Douglas, which were subsequently agreed to, are really additions, modifications or additions to what was in place. And we would have to incorporate those into any motion that you have in place. While we already have a motion, so I would have to amend my motion to incorporate.
Somebody?
I would, um, are we finished with the discussion? I guess I've got one question as to fencing. I just want to make sure that as it relates to the fencing on the eastern wall, are you opposed to having the conforming pillars with the decorative black fencing? You're okay with that?
Okay with that.
And that seems to be a suggestion that was made by Mr. Douglas as well for the majority of the residents. That seems to be amenable. And so I think that's the, the one item of concession that was kind of out there for as a concern to residents. So, that was everything. I wanted to make sure that there was at least some consensus on that. Remember, if you want to. I'm going to let you go ahead.
If any of you would live in the neighborhood, would you pass it?
I would.
I live, I live in the neighborhood. I live right there on the corner of Knight and St. John's with trucks and cars and a whole lot of stuff. And on my block, there are such and they people, I don't care. I think that whether you realize it or not, we have taken the time just not to sit here and listen to what they have to say. I've been calling and bugging people for almost the two weeks in between times. And Mr. Taylor's been to my house and sat down with me and Miss, I had a phone call from, tell me your name for some month, I haven't seen you before. I've sat and listened to both sides and I've gone out there. I know Kelly from going out there and looking at what he's trying to do. And we have to look at what's good for the greater number of people. It'll create jobs for us, it'll bring people in here, we're trying to do too good.
I mean, to answer the question, I mean, I don't think none of us are not doing anything to make sure that we preserve the integrity that that community has. And I think that Mr. Douglas or you all taking into consideration of having Mr. Douglas represent you all is a step towards saying that some way, some shape or form, you agree. Because if you didn't, you had the opportunity to get up and stand up and invoice that. So, would I make that if I was just living in your community? I most likely would.
I think, no certain statements. But if we are done, I would like to amend my motion to reflect the acceptance with the recommendations that came forth from Attorney Douglas and adding in there, making sure that with the fence that Mayor Hill just spoke of, excluding the drainage, because that is something that we have no necessary hold over. So, I would make that motion.
And I need to withdraw my second and to the first motion. And our second motion, second motion.
We have, Betsy, you have a recording of Mr. Douglas's presentation. And Mr. Salafrio, if I got it right, of his acceptance with the exception of the clarification as to the structure of the fence.
Yes, sir. That's in the record and if I could get a copy of it that Mr. Douglas has, that would be in the record also.
So you've got a written memo of Mr. Douglas?
Okay, I need to prove that I can provide.
Well, it's on the record, it's in the record. So, your motion would include the agreement as stated, as proposed by Mr. Douglas and as accepted by Mr. Salafrio?
Correct.
With the exception of the drainage and the modification of the fence to include the black wrought iron or aluminum, was it? Wrought iron or aluminum with the brick pillars or what else? So that's your motion?
Sir.
Does that need to withdraw my amended thing, seconded motion? No, that's seconded motion.
Once he withdrew his motion, I'm going to do anything. You just need a second motion.
I'll second that motion.
So we've got a motion on the floor with the amended directions. Can't have any further discussion because it's with the commission at this point. And the motion includes the enumerated changes which were agreed upon excluding the drainage plan, any amendments to the drainage plan. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Questions called. All in favor, my roll call, please.
And this is on the passage of the future land use amendment, amendment of the book.
Correct.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes by, vote three two. Moving on to.
What about the rezoning?
We're going to that.
Rezoning, I apologize.
Rezoning ordinance first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palatka, Florida be amended as to that search property located in Section 37, Township 9, Sound Range, 26 East, located just northeast of the intersection of Cupford Road and Crystal Cove Road. Be rezoned from R3 multi-family residential to PUD slash REC. The REC is at ROS.
ROS.
ROS, Blackened Unit Development, Providing Reciprocity and Providing an Effective Date.
Motion on the floor, second. We're now up on the floor, public here, is there anyone here, public here? Do you want to go ahead and make your comment at this time?
Thank you, sorry earlier. Scott Tingle, 232 Crystal Cove Drive. Just one of the remarks I'd like to share is the difference between the two Florida statutes on RV parks. If you have to define what sort of RV parks you're applying for. And you can have an owner park in which you have trailers and RVs and can rent them. And I think it's important that we define that this project is not one in which Mr. Salafrio parts RVs and trailers on the site and rents them ten, fifteen days at a time and then it becomes a community. That's not what it's intended to be. And so, you have to inform yourself about the difference of the two Florida statutes. There can be no owner RVs on this site. And I would request that that be written into the agreement, that there is no owner RVs or trailers on this site. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else here for public here? Seen no one. Seen no one else here for public here, a little close public here. Is there any further discussion? Questions, questions called, roll call.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote three two. Mr. Holmes, can you, you're Mr. Crowe and you guys give us some additional information as it relates to the mobile home issue? This is first reading. We still have an opportunity if necessary. I'm sorry, RV parks, I'm sorry. And we have an opportunity to review that if necessary, make your public comment. Moving on to item six of the agenda, city manager research, item A, appoint search committee.
Thank you for your leadership.
Getting to break. Let's take a quick break. Will be recessed for five minutes. Commissioner Thorpe, only five minutes. Item A is appoint search committee. Be discussed and approved guidelines for search. Committee, please give your report. Mr. Carey?
It's all right.
Mr. Carey?
Yes. We met, we went over the alternatives. Most of the process that we did go over is exactly like it was the last time, first commission's instructions. We advertised the position in the Palatka Daily News. It is also advertised on the FCCMA, the Florida City and County Managers Association website. It's advertised, well, I looked today and it had not yet, I guess, hit the queue for the Florida League of Cities, but it's in the queue. And I asked, it said it'd take about five days, up to five days for it to actually be approved, depending on how many are in front of it. So, it does show up to those. Ms. Robinson was going to put the advertisement out on social media on some of the employment sites that she has access to. And so, that is where we are so far on the advertisement. Tonight, you all were going to bring a name of someone to appoint to the committee. We have contacted the senior advisors through the FCCMA and they have recommended the gentleman who actually started off our search in 2015. He is out of, well, he's out of state right now, but he will be back before the end of the month. And so, he will start going through the applications at that time. And then the next process is the search process guideline. You have, and I did pass out a highlighted copy of that showing you what is up for discussion tonight. The rest of it is pretty much just like it was the last time. And those, this was all written by Mr. Holmes. It's the proposed guidelines for the city manager selection process.
You'll see blanks in the document because that allows you the opportunity of deciding what your preference is. For instance, on item seven, search to the nearest field to maximum of blank. Recommendation.
to maximum of blank recommendation was ten, but of course, that's entirely up to you as to what you think. Same thing at item ten, item ten, the two locations, there are blanks for your consideration. And then, as Betsy indicated, there's some alternatives there. Item five, one alternative is to wait until you, until all of the application of M E C to pass them out to everyone so you get all of them at one time. The other one is to distribute them weekly. I understand that there are advantages for both. Your choice. I mean, we were tasked to come up with guidelines, proposals for you to look at and decide. So that's what we did. It was intended to be a blueprint for you to follow, not a mandate. So, I mean, a blueprint for you to change if you want, not a mandate. So that's what we, I believe we did. Ms. Robinson, Betsy, and myself.
Any comments? Let's take the first issue, item A, appoint search committee. Does everyone have a recommendation for their appointee?
I don't have one tonight. My fault.
I could hit somebody, but I tried to catch up with him and I couldn't, so.
So can we have the recommendations for your appointment by Monday?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yes, we'll send it in by email.
You can communicate it to?
Senator.
To Mr. Strayer.
Okay.
You want us to send it to?
Send it to Mr. Strayer.
Okay.
I shit on somebody, but it was a while back, and I haven't talked to him in the
last two days. I just want to make sure he's available.
So by Monday, we will have the recommendations for the committee. As to the proposed guidelines, are there any oppositions to what's been placed before? Any changes to the recommended numbers in items seven and ten?
As long as I don't have to read the ten, I take the five.
Well, you're probably at the ready, all that submitted, and then you'll re-read the ten, reduce to, and then the five. And we'll make sure we give you large print.
Give you what?
Large print.
You know it.
So are you okay with the recommendation for ten, reduce to five, and then the commission can add one under number ten to the final candidate base?
I won't let you.
So the way, the way the process is written now, the second reduction is down to five, the commission has the ability to add an additional candidate.
After, after the?
After the reduction to five, you can make it a six-person pool as opposed to a five-person pool, if there's a candidate that someone feels strongly about.
Okay, okay. We'll be voting, okay. That's not fair.
Any objection? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the proposed guidelines.
Second.
Motion.
Can I just ask a question at five? Do you want the applications all at once, or you want it handed out on a weekly basis?
Delay is five?
Nope, no, no. All of, I would have any initial. I was fine with getting them. I want to get them all at the same time. If everybody has a preference or other, please let us know.
I like them all at the same time, personally.
So if we get them all at the same time, make sure that we have enough time to actually... Time is all yours. Time is all yours. They actually go to the committee before they come to you. So you've got time as the committee starts to reduce. And so there's one on the floor and a second to adopt proposed guidelines with the recommended numbers for item seven and ten.
We have another alternative on number twelve.
On number twelve, which will mean concessions is that select the candidate from the final candidate base. The selection shall be based upon a girly vote after motion and second by the commission. Alternative commissioners will rank the candidates by first and second by ballot. The candidate receiving the most number one votes will be ranked first. The candidate receiving the most number two votes will be ranked second. Last time we just voted?
You ranked one.
We ranked them, but we ranked them, we abandoned.
We put number, we put numbers on them, and then that helped rank them based on the accumulated totals.
Yeah, you ranked them number one and number two. You didn't go one through five because you actually had five finalists. So you ranked just number one and number two.
Right.
And so the most number one votes, you, and the most number two votes, and then you looked at that, and then someone made a motion.
Is that acceptable? Do you want to keep that in practice?
That, that would be basically still like the accumulation if you, if you only had two, like if there's two candidates. But you're just saying if you just one, two, or how many ever we had, it would still be like the same.
Well, the, the two with the highest votes kind of rose to the top.
Right.
And so.
Then we, yeah.
Commission had an idea of what that was, what motion and second.
Yeah. I mean, I thought that worked out.
Any thoughts on that? Is that what you anticipated with the motion? Very well. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries to the head of the sleeve. We're done with that. Moving on. Reports. Scrubs.
Just to keep you all updated, got a Seminole electric in this week, finishing up their training. We did twelve hours of it yesterday, doing twelve a day, and we're going to do twelve tomorrow. It's a day-to-day operational thing, but I've expressed somebody, we lost our boat motor on our fire rescue boat this past week. We're getting quotes in now to fix it. We've been using it with the public department, get out, do some surveys, but right now we're out of a fire boat, as everybody's aware. Ask Sheriff's Office for their old book. Try that route, see what happens. But other than that, we're doing school inspections this week. Did eight of them the last two days, so we should get the last of those done Tuesday, Thursday next week. And we're just getting ready for the trunk or treat with the PD and our Buonaventure. And we got that Seminole electric again next week. Other than that, so questions?
Good thing so. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you all for your deliberation tonight. I know it was difficult. Appreciate your hard work, but it will get that cleaned up for the second reading and hopefully presented to a clearer way, fixing mistakes. Don't have a lot. The racetrack station at State Road twenty nineteen is moving forward. They did confirm it, it'll be moving forward. Carver, the Dollar Store, Reed and Sevens also is moving forward. So we'll have some things coming up on the ground pretty soon. Keep you posted.
I've got a question. Have you heard anything about Seminole GP expansions, doing any expansion?
Yeah, I have. My county camera corps is, will be handling that.
Why, why I'm asking him that is that this may be an ideal time to start looking for somebody who will put some upscale housing, if they're going to bring people in, to see if we can find a company that'll come in here and do some condos or some housing or something. Do we need to open our eyes and ears to see who we can go after to come look at us to see if it's something we can do? So, Mayor Hill, you kind of check with the whoever and find out so we can start the, being that earthen and that pearl and start worrying some of these people. So by the time they do, we had a pearl.
There's been conversation with the Seminole project. It was announced earlier that that, that expansion was going to get ready to kick off. It was going to be a thirty-three month expansion. There's been significant conversation about them looking for housing for their workers for that extended period of time. And there's also been some conversation about the number, the availability of hotel rooms during the time that both companies are going to make their expansions, and the impact that it will have on the availability of rooms during the height of our tourism and fishing tournaments, et cetera. We talked about that during the TBC meetings as well. And so it's definitely something that's been explored both by the county and the city. But the problem is, it's temporary.
Right, right.
Three years. Mr. Mayor, don't see?
Stay here forever.
Well, we might, once we get them here, we might be able to keep them. You never know what, you got to have hope.
I guess so.
We talked about the minimum stay in the ordinance. There's a minimum stay for hotel rooms, I believe it's seven days. I've never been enforced.
Minimum or maximum?
I was.
Maximum, are you?
I was.
Maximum, thank you.
The other thing now I was going to ask, I've done some, I've called the people who build Holly Ridge, and they have money to invest sometime, and they got Holly Ridge and put the other apartment complex next to the?
Woodlands, Haylocken?
No, not that one. On the other side of?
Woodlands.
Woodlands. Woodlands is one of their apartment complexes. And I was wondering if the commission could get some invitation letters from investors to have them come take a look at us. We got to go for them. They not coming, let me go for them. If you could just put that in, you don't have to answer me tonight, just put it down in your memory bank. I'll be bringing that back.
We're going to delegate you to hell of that.
No, we got to do it together. I mean.
We'll get you to put them in a car, I'll let them out.
That's it, that's it. That's how Holly Ridge got it, y'all laugh. But that's how Holly Ridge got it. But we, we've got to start opening up the doors and have a broader, you all got a broad vision. We got to do something with it. I mean, I don't say have them studies, do the studies, do the studies. It's time, all right.
There's, we were just, we were, just, just as a side note for what you're saying, there's a group that approached us about the possibilities of bringing in some veteran housing, some transitional veteran housing into the area. And so I will actually continue to have conversations with them and bring them to the, and try to set up a meeting with the commission as a whole, and announce that so that we can start to have some conversations prior to meetings. And so those are the things that are out there. There are some other groups that are looking to do some affordable housing stuff as well. And so those are some things that are in the mix. Once that stuff is in place, then we're going to look to bring that forward as well as some affordable housing, and affordable housing plan to the commission to actually put it in place and so that we can start to move forward and take things into our own hands. So those are some future endeavors that will be before you very quickly. And so staff is diligently working on some of those parameters to get that stuff in place. And so.
I just wanted to see some of that data, so.
Ms. Mayor, now, come on. Well.
I had one.
Mr. Griffin.
Yeah, I had one thing.
As you come forward.
Kind of piggybacking off what the mayor said, I was approached by a group of people from Gainesville and talking about some of the sustainable houses on some of our smaller lots. And then we have a number of the smaller lots throughout the city looking at, maybe want to invest in some of those. But they're going to come with a presentation, so looking forward to having them get on the job.
That's part of what we brought forward for that RFP. And so you'll see that stuff come out. We're actually writing the parameters of that stuff, writing the parameters for that now, so that people can actually come forward with the plan.
Yes, sir. Actually, on that, Mr. Crowe and myself went through the entire list of city properties, and I think he's almost complete drafting the list of properties we believe would be candidated to those sites. So that should probably be ready for you in the next couple of weeks. Talking about post-disaster items, we are dealing with some major repairs. Right now, we're working with some contractors closely, and providing the scopes as well as our engineers, to figure out the best way to move forward relating to some stormwater as well as to some sanitation, sanitary sewer lines. I think everyone's aware that we have a lot of infiltration into our sanitary sewer system, about one point five million gallons a day in excess, that's what we normally see. That total is down now. We bypassed a certain section of the city, and we're pumping almost three city blocks down on Third and Main, Third and Madison. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be back before the commission will propose to fix that, not just put a band-aid on it, as well as some stormwater repairs on North Sixth Street. Construction projects, everything is going well, thankfully. We're two weeks out from paving on the Southern Riverfront. Armstrong Contracting is making good headway on the water taxi terminal. They're putting in the remainder of the floor today. Hopefully that'll be complete by the end of the week. I believe they're planning on taking the fence down prior to the extreme bass tournament that should occur on November fourth. And we're making headway on repairs on the docks to be prepared for the bass tournament. Plenty of other stuff going on. I'm going to try and have Ms. Kayla Wiley come before you at the next couple of meetings to tell you all the good improvements and operational changes that are taking place at the water treatment plant. I could keep talking, but that's, that's the major stuff.
Let's get a summary of the aftermath as it relates to our drainage issues that we've had subsequently. Let's get that over to, to our delegation and the partners, the partners, so that they can have that information. I think that's going to be critical for us as we start to look for funding. And so just kind of a one-page summary. And if you got any photos, I'm sure you do. And I know, and I know this has been a very pressing issue, and you guys have really been working diligently on it. But let's get that information over to them along with some photos, and let's see what we can do from the disaster relief standpoint, to see if we can get some additional help in dealing with the, really, mostly those terracotta lines, I think, more than anything, and the way the gravity system is set up, because it's, it's older than all of us, you know, put together. And so I think if we can do that, it really just, I think it may be beneficial to us. I heard you, Mr. Brown. And so it might have won, and it puts us all together.
So just one comment, and you made me think of it better. If I can impress upon you the seriousness of what we're experiencing right now, a lot of the damage hasn't surfaced yet. So for instance, I was driving down Eleventh Street today, got into the lot, and somebody came behind me and said, did you see that sinkhole on Eleventh Street? It opened up literally behind my truck.
Wow.
So these things are going to be occurring over the next couple of months as the groundwater level recedes. So if you see a depression in the road, call it in.
After you get the sinkhole.
It was big enough for a car.
Wow. I've seen one over there by the, is that, would that be the one that by, by the gas, gas authority? Is that one?
So that, that hole we created. It wasn't that big a star.
Okay.
But yes, sir, that's a perfect example. It's a stormwater pipe that's failing, and we've got infiltration, and it pulls the sand in with it, and eventually the pavement gives way.
Okay.
You're seeing significant damage all around town off the old grid. And, you know, it's, it's kind of a, and it's been approached from a piecemeal standpoint, and at some point, we've just got to bite the bullet and make a call. And that's where we are.
And Jonathan and I talked about this earlier today. We're going to be trying to get in touch with our FEMA rep. We should be having the kickoff meeting with FEMA soon, but we're going to be trying to get their hazard mitigation person on site ASAP so that we can go around to these different things and show them, and try to work with them to see what can be done under the, the project worksheets that we'll be doing under the hurricane. So, you know, all of these different things that we're talking about will hopefully be reimbursable under the, maybe not under the hazard mitigation program, but under the actual project worksheets directly related to the hurricane. And it won't be, you know, a longer period of time, so.
Right. Thanks for the good news.
Just wanted to inform you, play, there's new business setting up at the airport, sad news, and expect to see all of you out there. It's a helicopter sightseeing.
Wow, okay.
It's going in the new, the old Turtle Village, on Air Farm, the helicopters incorporated. And it'd be great for you to come out and take a ride over the city and take the fruits of your labor and see the place grow.
And I just think.
And take some photographs of all the improvements that are happening, so.
What are they going to fly on, John?
And Robinson, I think Robinson forty-four, which can carry three passengers and a pilot.
When, when does it start?
Well, they're, they're setting up, they put the first train in, getting their telephones hooked up.
So when do you want us out?
Let's get with the cameras over.
Let's give the chairman a second to grant open.
I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Okay, well, you know, she hasn't known, she hasn't known if all of us coming the same time, she doesn't know the fact.
Not for a tour. You're gonna agree on that? You don't need to.
And the gentleman here is setting it up, wants to be part of the community and reach out to the high school and is interested in getting involved with the Boys Ranch. So we're pleased to have Air Florida Helicopters Incorporated. Hopefully, you get there by the aviation bug. And speaking of that, we're gonna start planning for our eighth annual community open house in Flagstaff. So please mark your calendars for January 27th. And we'll get you a helicopter, being now and then, January 27th is your date.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Captain Williams. Glad to see you here today, sir.
You said the helicopter, it was four people?
Four people.
Or me and you?
Yeah. The pilot and three, or pilot?
What's the weight capacity?
The owner did say, anybody still involved in law enforcement, you pissed me off.
No, you were not sleeping on that.
I wish you real way, you missed that or the guy that went.
You were not sleeping on that, this is, I don't know, like, to me. I don't have a lot to report, just wanna talk about some of the big things coming up, like Fall Festival, Trump or Treats planned for October 31st. Which we're working pretty hard, pretty hard to get prepared for that. Last year, we kind of got overwhelmed with, like, a bunch of people showing up. We didn't expect that, so we hope we're ready for it this year. Fall Festival's pretty much ready to go, gonna finalize some things for that this time of week. So that is on the 28th of October, which is a Saturday, starts at 10:00. It's scheduled to run until about 2:00 o'clock, so come out and check it out. There is a walk also that day. Breast Cancer Awareness Walk is going on downtown, it kind of incorporates with the Fall Festival, so Michelle is the coordinator for that. So they kind of go on at the same time, so we're looking forward to that also. Another big thing going on right now, our pal is kicking off our basketball program. Registration will go out tomorrow to the schools. That's our biggest program this fall. We probably have 200 kids participating in that program. And this year, hopefully, it might even grow a little bit. I've had some communication with Hastings. Last year, they provided us with two teams, this year, they're looking at doing four teams, so it might be a little bit bigger this year. But that's where we're at right now.
Looking for coaches and all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, coaching.
Thank you, sir.
You want me to sound coach? I plead victim. You can look up for one time.
Mr. Holmes.
I'm good.
Happy time now, sir. Mr. Reynolds.
Jonathan mentioned, I was gonna mention, you know, the five or six places we're out having issues with so far. We will be meeting with the IT firm next week, looking at IT projects, getting those underway. Coming up, probably on the next agenda, we'll need to get the Clay Electric franchise renewal ordinance on the agenda. If some of the commissioners remember, we did a franchise lease renewal about five years ago, it was a five-year term, and it expires, I believe, October 21st. I'll have to go back and look at it, so we need to renew that lease. We're gonna be working on setting up training dates in November for the new digital records software. And also gonna be working on the legislative appropriation requests, getting those out to our state and federal representation. So that's all I can think of. Yeah, I can, I can mention that, too. We'll be doing some improvements here at City Hall coming up pretty soon to kind of reorganize the front counter. And we'll be bringing over the employees from next door. That way, everything will be located here in City Hall. Hopefully, make it a little more easier for customers and citizens who come in because the traffic we've been receiving in City Hall now is primarily either building and zoning related or utility related. And so we're kind of turning people around and sending them right back out to go somewhere else. So if we can move those, move those tasks over here, it would resolve at least one of, one of, one group having to be sent somewhere else, so.
What's gonna happen to the building over there? Is it gonna be empty?
It will be from time being, but that will be something that we're going to be bringing back to the commission for a, really needs to, the commission needs to have a visioning session to where we can talk about some different things, about location of public works facilities. We did have in the budget to construct some new facilities for public works. I think all of you know the current state of the facilities at what we call the city lot. They are in dire need of improvements. But also talking about, you know, long-term plans for City Hall and those other sorts of functions. Improvements to this building, making renovations to that building, you know, and the potentials that we have with that, so.
Are you gonna bring it back when you decide to bring it back to the commission, so we know what you're doing ahead of time? Because I'm concerned, we didn't mess around and gave the property at the train station to rails and trails. And we had bought that property to be a turnaround for buses, because we were in hopes that the ground bus would come back, or for parking. It's almost a hack-a-block. Now, they went diagonally across it instead of going around it or to one side of it. And some things were done, like they took the stage out of the price margin without even saying anything to anybody, took the curtains and stuff down. And people had worked very hard to get some of that stuff in there. I'd just like to know, when you're doing major changes like that, that we know something about it or can say something about it to you or even help you with some of the things that need to be done.
There won't be any major changes to either of these buildings without input from the commission, and that's what I was referencing, whether it be complete renovations or anything like that. But of course, that's something that the commission needs to decide, you know, what each of these buildings or this property itself should be, should be doing for the next 30 to 50 years.
Commissioner Campbell.
He's always laughing.
Nick, don't need to come back to you. Alright, don't worry about it. Commissioner Borum.
Alright, just on the IT projects, kinda like to get a list of those, look at them, kind of understand what kind of projects we got, like to see those. Also, a list of normal leases, I know we have a number of them out there and account where they're falling and...
Can we go back to IT for a second?
Yeah.
Like, for example, like, I don't understand, because that's outside of my realm.
What is that?
What do you mean, like, what type of projects?
Well, we just mentioned IT projects that will be coming up. He also mentioned the digital scanning.
Records management.
Records management project, so any of those things, I'd kind of like to have a little understanding, when they're coming up, what are we doing? And you mentioned other things outside of the digital scanning. So I'd like to see those. We have the Kahaka Bike coming up, is the 5K kayak, 5K run, 10K bicycle triathlon coming up. They would like to have people to participate in that, if at all possible. Put on by putting them Blue Waves and Trails, is the 21st of this month. And I probably won't be part of that, because I'll probably be out of town, son's birthday, and we're gonna be celebrating that, so. But if anybody's interested, I'd be happy to kind of share that with, that's all I have.
You okay now?
I'm fine.
Yes, sir. You got anything?
That's fine. Take notes.
Commercial council. Life never per hour.
I want to remind people, anybody who had service in the Maryland Hospital, 10 o'clock on Saturday morning for a picture. But I want to add to that, I think that we have so much history in this town that we have let go by. And I think we got enough history books out there, we need to start pumping out tourism, and history might be the thing to do it. And I would like for us to start gathering and getting us in places other than just here that people are knowing will want to come here to visit. And I'm gonna ask my two sisters sitting back out there, be the ones probably to help volunteer with anybody else that's hitting the lane back there, on helping us to start looking at our history and seeing if we can put us as in a historical place to visit because of all the people we've had doing stuff over the years. So I just want to bring that to y'all, to think to y'all, give us a answer, and let us say, we're gonna do it anyway. Thank you, that's it.
She has spoken. No, I just want what she brought about this storm stuff. I know that we had talks about bringing somebody in to assist with the engine of branding for Black, so I want to know what you are with that. We, from the public relations side, the conversation about the public relations person, we haven't moved forward with our RFP. We've been kind of dealing with some of the aftermath of the storm. And so...
Do we have to hire somebody to do, to do that? We had somebody, we hired, and they spent a bunch of money, came in here and put some little lines on.
I think it's more, it's not as much as branding, it's nothing, it's in your nature type situation. I think it's more of the putting somebody in place to do, to put the good that's going on in this community out in the forefront as opposed to...
So you won't fuck with the mission?
Right, right. PR person.
So then I can hand them over this history stuff as we get it matured, get that here?
Right. And so I think along those same lines, there's a cultural arts organization out that does, for example, they do virtual street tours of communities. Bartow is probably one of the smallest communities that's there. Orlando, Mahogany, those communities have different things for their cultural arts and history sections of their community. They actually do historic tours. And so we're gonna move forward with trying to get, to get to the managed commission, to try to get some of that stuff in place with Black. And I think that goes along the lines of the things that you were looking at doing, along with the two young ladies in the back of the room. I think as a part of the projects that you have in place, that goes directly into what we're doing. Commissioner Campbell, you're kind of the social media liaison for the commission. If you can maybe, if we can all maybe share a post about Vice Mayor Brown's photo for the Loston Hospital, I think that'll be something, something else to help us get the information out besides just word of mouth. But I think overall, the city, we're diligently working on completing the armor stage, for lack of any other term. I think the cleanups have gone well. Mr. Griffith, when do we anticipate going back to our regular trash pickup?
Next week, sir.
So next week, we're looking. The debris cleanup is pretty close to completion, right? Right, and so I can tell you, it's been a super job just to get to that point, you know, within that 30-day period or thereof. So that's been critical, everything else. And so, and so we've seen the guys diligently working on that. On the recreation side, we've got two parks, the fencing is going up at the parks now. We lost about eight poles throughout that process and a lot of lighting. But the bids came in, the fencing is being replaced at both Fred Green and Forester as we speak. The Booker Park, 2020 project, stormwater project is actually well on its way. That, the park has taken a whole different shape. Like, people are excited about the possibilities of what's coming there. And so things are, projects are moving forward. And so I think overall, we're fine.
I know that park was part of, one of the parks that were gonna be improved, left the Turner Park, but then the Hank Bryan Park, is we gonna start on that, or was it on part of that?
Hank Bryan Park, there is a design. I think one of the things that we're waiting on with Hank Bryan is to look at additional opportunities referred at to, as it relates to redoing the surfaces for the basketball courts, some of the other things that are in place. And so it's, it's been in the grand scheme of things. Mr. Griffith's worked on those plans a while back, and so in the midst of everything, that's one of the things we're looking at. If there are any things, any suggestions that come from the commission, just kind of get with Mr. Griffith and let him know, and we'll see how best we can, we can probably incorporate those into what's going on.
Man, I'd like to ask y'all, if y'all are not doing anything, 10 o'clock Saturday morning, to show up, to, I want a picture of us to take your pursuit.
I was in one of the other hospitals.
Okay, where you from?
10 o'clock, Hampshire. Well, she's, wanna be at the riverfront?
Um, I'm not sure if I'm being taken at the...
At the hospital?
Yeah, the site right there on the corner of Ninth and St. John's.
Okay.
The hospital's set right on that.
Okay.
So that's good, we, I, that kind of concludes my report. If there's nothing else, we will be, we will enter.